10 C ordinance 14 dash 66. Ms. Phillips, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance to change the approved LMD conceptual site plan for property located on the north side of Peacock Boulevard and west of Northwest California Boulevard for the proposed Somerset Treasure Coast Charter School and legally described as St. Lucy West, plat number 81, parcel 12, P 14 dash 120, providing for an effective date.
Okay, I have quite a few people signed up, so we're gonna try to do this as quickly as possible. First one signed up, Erica Rains.
Good evening, Council. Thank you guys for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I know you guys have seen this through P and Z and you've seen the packages, so it won't take a lot of your time. I just wanted to let you know that I am here to answer questions. I know I saw some more questions come through today, so I'm here to answer questions. My architectural team is here, my engineering team is also here to answer questions if need be, once you've heard everyone. Thank you.
I'm just going through the cards. We have a cheerleading squad in that. If it's okay, in lieu of time, if it's okay, Ms. Rains, all these cards here, there's 27 of them, are in favor of College Preparatory Academy. I only have two. If it's okay with the parents, if the overall consensus, we are in favor of the school, but I do have to, is it okay that we know there, we have this many, and just hear these two, and then the council can move forward? Does the council object, or does the council want us to hear every single one? I'm just-
It's totally up to you, Madam Mayor, and the public that signed up for public to be heard.
Is it okay?
But then maybe your president of the student council, maybe one more?
That's fine. That's fine. Absolutely.
Two. Two of the others are opposed.
I have two that are, one is undecided and one is opposed. So let me, let me just go with Dominic Garcia. Garcia?
Dominic Rossi.
Garcia, okay.
Madam Mayor-
I'm just going-
-members of the council.
Sorry.
My name is Dominic Rossi and I reside at 234 Northwest Shamir Lane in the Cascades, St. Lucy West. I've been a resident in Port St. Lucie for the past 16 years and moved into the Cascades on December 29, 2000, so it's 14 years in the Cascades. I have seen the population of our city grow over the past 16 years to what it is today, the third largest city in the state of Florida. I have some concerns in regard to this proposed charter school, which I feel I must express to you, our elected officials. I am not opposed to the school. Okay, let's get that straight. However, I am concerned with the issues and the problems associated with it that will affect the students, parent drivers, all who drive on Peacock and California Boulevards, and the residents living in the Cascades who use our rear gate many times during the day, every day. My first concern is for the children walking or biking to and from this new school, and the parents driving them to and from the proposed school. The traffic situation that will occur regardless of what your models and engineers say will be real, and they will occur. The existing roundabout at Peacock and California Boulevard replaced the four-way stop sign a few years ago. That four-way stop impeded the flow of traffic. The design of a roundabout is to keep the traffic moving, but this proposal calls for two crosswalks, so students will be able to cross from one side of the street to another. I can only see nothing but confusion and mayhem, as well as an increase in accidents at the site trying to restart traffic that has been stopped on all four directions many times during the course of the day. The roadway was widened in both directions on Cashmere Boulevard at the location for the existing Renaissance Charter School, and we still have major traffic issues with parents driving and picking up their children. Was this foreseen by the Traffic and Engineering Department of the city? I hope we are not using the same models for this situation. We should be learning from, from our past mistakes. Here again, we foresee major pickup and drop-off issues outside our rear gate regardless of the planned staggered drop-off and pickup time. Cascades residents have a limited view of oncoming traffic coming from the east and the west. We can only fit two or three cars from our open gate to the edge of the roadway, which will impose a major issue backing up traffic on Cascades Island Boulevard because of the increased flow on Peacock.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time's up.
I have two people left.
Anthony Labati?
I have one more paragraph.
I'm sorry, sir, it's, it's three minutes. Anthony Labati?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Labate, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today about the proposed charter school. I speak to you as a parishioner of St. Bernadette's Church. I also live in the Cascades, but my discussion today is about the issues with the church. Five years ago, the city determined that for safety reasons and other reasons, that when that, before the permit for the building of that church would be approved, we had to build turning lanes into the property. That was gonna cause a big financial problem for the, for the, for the church, and the city came up with a proposal that worked out into an agreement, that the city would allow us, the church, to pay off the, the cost of those turning lanes in return that the, on a, on a installment basis rather than all at once, and that the city then would take responsibility for the building of those turning lanes. Five years has passed since that time, and we don't have turning lanes. The, the church has paid off the full amount of the cost of those turning lanes as the agreement provided. Now, I don't know if anyone has done a study as to the increased activity at that church. For instance, in the five years since the agreement was reached, the church has increased its family membership by over 1,000 people, and at this point, we have over 6,000 parishioners using that church. When you consider all the other activity that is happening on California Boulevard, plus the, the school now, I think it really requires that the, the, the city give us the, the results of our payments, and that is the turning lanes. And when you consider the California Boulevard is now the main corridor for a lot of activities, not only the school, the college, and the Met Stadium, which also uses California. I point out that the college has turning lanes, but the, the church does not, does not have turning lanes for which we paid for. So we're asking that the, the city step up and give us those turning lanes and construct them based upon that agreement. That's it.
Thank you. Jeff, can you look into that?
It's already in the design phase right now, Madam Mayor, just as, it's in the design phase right now, and it should be executed within the next year to 18 months, but it's designed, it's currently designing right now.
Then I would ask that you notify the pastor, because he doesn't know that.
We will.
Yeah. I spoke from Thursday, and he has no idea that this is on, in the works.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Karina Posero?
Good evening. My name is Karina Posero, and I'm a junior at Somerset College Preparatory Academy. I am proud to say that I have been a Spartan since the doors opened to the first and only charter high school of St. Lucy County. Imagine being the first graduating class out of a new school building that is much larger and more efficient than what we currently are in is incredible. Coming to Somerset College Preparatory Academy, our students have a different mindset about their education compared to other high schools. They come here based on their academic ability and their want to strive to succeed. As students who go to a college prep school, our main focus is to better our education. Dual enrollment is an excellent way for students to take on a college course at Indian University College, because not only will this approach allow them to earn college credits and high school credits at IRSC, but it also gives them the opportunity to explore the college atmosphere. The accessibility from our school campus now and our future campus to IRSC is a major advantage to those who want to apply for dual enrollment due to the fact that the college is only a walking distance away, and they will no longer have to worry about transportation. The students who attend our school are dedicated, passionate, and committed to not only their schoolwork, but to one another, and creating a school environment that we all live for. We all have to thank our amazing principal, vice principal, teachers and faculty for all that they do to get us to achieve beyond our expectations. As Somerset College Preparatory Academy Spartans, we have created a school bond that cannot be broken. Please take the time to understand how much our students value their education and what the future holds for them. With the new campus that our school will be built on, we can continue to reach many new goals and create a path full of success for our current Spartans and the many more to come. However, that will be very hard to achieve if we do not have a larger building to further our education. Each and every one of these students, students have a positive impact on the growth of our community, and with your vote, you can continue that legacy. Thank you.
Brianna? Brianna Zergar? Brianna?
Good evening. My name is Brianna Zergar, and I'm an 11th grade student at Somerset College Prep. Somerset College Prep is a choice school. All students who attend here all want to be here and understand that this school is very academically focused, as evident by our A-school rating. I myself am extremely thankful for the education I have gotten in my high school career, and I know my fellow classmates will agree. What Ms. Erica Rains has accomplished is incredible. She's created not only an amazing and safe high school filled with brilliant scholars, but she has created a second family with teachers and students. In our last meeting with the Planning and Zoning Board, one big point the Cascades members stated, and I quote, "We are not against the school, we are against the location. But where else is there for us to go? I'm aware of the fact that we have plenty of open lots, but none of them will allow us to fulfill our name of being a college prep school. We deserve to have our campus on a col-, near a college, as this allows us to accommodate our many students who dual enroll." I personally have a younger brother and sister who deserve to experience all the opportunities that Somerset College Prep has to offer, and by not approving this request, you are taking away that opportunity for hundreds of eager students to get the best possible education. Would you rather have an A-rated school with a nature preserve on-site and limited traffic, or would you prefer a busy shopping center or condos, which would cause an amazing amount of both motor vehicle and foot traffic? I think this answer is quite clear. Not only will you be taking away our school, but this is also taking away a second home and sanctuary to many students. We are a family at Somerset College Prep, and as you could see, we refuse to give up on our school.
Barbara Smith? Barbara Smith. Barbara Smith? Barbara, Barbara Smith?
That's not my name. I'm Sheila Reagan, Mill Pond Lane.
That's the only-
I didn't say opposed, because I'm not opposed, but I didn't say for either, so... But I would, I have something important I would like to say. All right. It's a concern having to do with the storm water runoff of the proposed charter school site. It was recently discovered through conversations with city and district officials that through previous agreements with the city of Port St. Lucie and the South Florida Water Management District, any storm water runoff coming from the plat and parcel would drain into Cascades retention ponds located on Spring View and Breezy Point Loops. At the meeting when you were attended at our community, we thought that our storm water went the other way. The RV park also drains into that C-108 canal. The two areas within the, these two areas within the Cascades, Spring View and Breezy Point Loop, have always been prone to flooding before any other area within our community. We do not want or need any more water coming into the community from outside the walls, regardless of previous agreements, and we don't know about this situation, and strongly suggest that it be looked into before approving the proposal. The new charter school is needed, but not at the expense of residents and taxpayers. I also would like to ask, I attended this September 1st meeting, I attended the meeting at Cascades, and my only question has to do with their plan for controlling the traffic, which is ultimately the safety also. And I know that there's going to be a turnoff lane, I think about 300 feet. They're going to have three lines of traffic coming in to pick up. With the split schedule, I figured about 1,500 students ultimately, that's 500 students each shift. They said that they would bus maybe 20 to 30 percent, 20 or 30 percent of the students, that's maybe 150, that leaves 350. The 300-foot turnoff could take maybe 20 cars. Your three lines up is maybe another 20, 60 cars. I know you have a parking lot that is, part of it is for students, part is for teachers, but maybe there's another 100 cars. That, I don't really see how that can manage all the cars without them truly backing up and causing a very dangerous possibly traffic jam, and I would just like to know what Plan B might be, if indeed the traffic is not what we hope it would be. And I know that you're going to supposedly look at the traffic before each phase, so I just am curious what Plan B would be. Thank you.
Who's the PTO, who's the head of the PTO?
The head of PTO is Lisette Flores. She's in the lobby.
Okay. Did you want her to speak now, or?
If she signed a card.
Do, I know you have a lot of kids. Let's, you want to go ahead and let them speak?
It's up to council. I know that parents have been texting because you said that, so I think they want to be heard.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm giving everybody an opportunity to speak. Lisa Warden?
Lisa Warden also.
Oh, excellent.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and distinguished members of our city council. My name is Lisa Warden. I reside at 1180 Carlton Court, Unit N in Fort Pierce. I have been a resident for the last 14 years, and as an advocate in St. Lucy County for the past 12. I am trained to observe the facts and listen to both parties. Their concern is to find a viable solution in mitigating concerns in a timely and professional manner. With that said, I am in a, I am in favor to change the approved LMD conceptual site plan for the proposed Somerset College Preparatory Academy at St. Lucy West, plat 18, parcel 12, P 14 120. As you are aware, on 9/214, the Port St. Lucie Planning and Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval for the change to the approved concept plan for the new A-rated Somerset College Preparatory Academy, at which time Brian Kelly, planning engineer with Simmons and White, thoroughly and respectfully addressed the residents of the Cascades their concerns as expressed by Mr. and Mrs. Goldstein, Mr. and Mrs. Vinvieto, and Renee Mayer, as documented in the operational management plan that analyzed the vehicle stacking and transportation impact statement for analyzing the off-site traffic impacts of the proposed charter school, to include but not be limited to the projected enrollment staggered times, onsite queuing, comprehensive traffic control, sidewalks north to Trina Boulevard, and more, to the preservation and management of our beautiful wetlands. Now that the concerns have been addressed, let's take a moment to mention the achievements and the benefits of Somerset College Preparatory. It's an A-rated school, which means our property values and will increase, as well as an attractor for corporations to consider as we build our reputation as a research coast. 100% of our students, in the lowest 25%, made gains in math. 73% of our students in our lowest 25% made gains in reading. These were the highest gains in all of the high schools throughout our district. We also earned the most points for gains in math and reading in the district. 80% math proficiency in the, it was the highest in the district, and we had the second highest proficiency in 9th and 10th grade reading. The only high school invited to Johns Hopkins Symposium in 2013. The only high school invited to Indian River State College STEM Building dedication ceremony on the Pruitt campus. Our school instills community service-
Ma'am, the time, time's up. Sorry.
Thank you.
Michael Nunez? Michael Nune-
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm standing here in front of you to tell you what a father and thinks about the school. As a former Marine, I see these kids walking around, and I hear their emotions about the school and what they want to do with their lives, and I have to tell you, it's amazing. I think every single one of you should spend some time with them. I know your decision tonight is not easy. You're sitting there, and you're thinking, well, we gotta be happy with everybody, all right? We're here to serve the community. And that's right, you're here to serve the community. But also, you're standing there, or sitting there, I'm sorry, acting as a founding fathers. Think about what they did. They didn't really care what everybody wanted to do. They only saw the future. I heard you here talk about the future of Port St. Lucie. I heard you talk about, let's do what is right, and let's do what the city has to do. Well, just think about these kids. Think about their future. This could be the next presidents of industry. Who knows? Maybe two or three presidents of the United States will come from this high school. You know? We can only dream of, all right? And we can only hope. So anyways, I don't have a long speech, but I think you should really reconsider. All the other problems with traffic and water runs off, I'm gonna tell you, if you're gonna wait until you get every little, every little answer done before it happens, it will never get happen. Sometimes you just have to hit the run running. So just go ahead and say yes. Do it, and we can figure it out, the rest of it in the future. We can deal with anything and any other problems in the future. So I wish you the best, and I know you will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen, Carmen Montero? Carmen?
She's outside.
No, she's right there.
I'm right here.
Good evening, Council. My name is Carmen Montero. I'm a freshman at Somerset College Preparatory Academy of the Treasure Coast, and I am very honored to be able to stand here and speak in front of you. I, I, even on my first day, I was astonished, being able to be welcomed into the school, and I want other students from around our city to feel as welcome as I have. Being a freshman, I'm at the very bottom, but I don't feel that way. Yeah, no. I feel that there are students out there that need the education that I have, and I feel that I understand many things in this school, and this school is the perfect education site for me and for a lot of students here. And our students here in Somerset College Preparatory Academy are very good students, and I'm, I understand that there are people who are concerned about misbehavior, and I'm telling you now, that won't happen. I know our school, it won't happen, and allowing us to build more land for our, for our school would not only allow more students to come, but will allow even more success. We are the new generation. We're the, your future. We're your future, and it's your decision on how your future depends on us. Thank you.
Morgan Patton? Morgan?
Hello, my name is Morgan Patton. Somerset College Preparatory Academy has given me so many unique opportunities. I'm a junior, and I started my first day of high school here. January of my freshman year, our high school was the only high school in Florida that was allowed to go to the Johns Hopkins Symposium. Myself, along with other fellow students, were able to learn about Alzheimer's and other cancers. Last year, my school had our first history fair, and my group won second place for the district and went up to Tallahassee to represent our school and this district. Another student and myself are in the process with our wonderful science teacher, we, which we have lured from St. Edwards, to start our own National Honor Society. We are an A-rated school, and just two years of being open and growing more students and other students should be able to experience the incredible school. I'm extremely proud to say I represent Somerset College Prep and that I am a junior. Thank you.
Jamie? Jamie Patton?
Good evening. I'm her mother. She started out when the school was built. It's an A-rated school in just two years. It's a wonderful school, has the potential to be a phenomenal school, and I think it will. I've lived here since 1987, long before St. Lucy West existed, and watched the road be built, and red light after red light, and business after business, and the land's up for sale, 10 acres. What better, who better to build and buy than a school? IRSC is growing. It would have been IRSC or college prep. It's, it's progress. We can't stop progress. So I just wanted to say that I think it's a wonderful school, and it should be voted in. As far as traffic, there was some discussion about that. It's gonna be broken up, you know, there's 300 students now, and I thought, oh gosh, I'm gonna have to, I told Morgan, I said, "I'll pick you up at 4 o'clock every day instead of 3:30." But the, everybody's gone. It's 80, 88% ride the bus. So the, there is no traffic. Everybody's gone. I am there about 10 minutes after school lets out, and there's no one there. The cars are gone, the buses are gone, so it's really quickly over and evacuated. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Townsend?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm not gonna be repetitive. You're gonna hear enough of it tonight, but I just wanted to say that I have friends that their children attend this school. I've heard about it since it was conceived, and many of them, several have spoke earlier today. And I, I took a visit. They asked me if I would come this evening, and I told them that I couldn't without doing a little bit more research. So I went out there. I went out there about 30 minutes after school was out. One day, I sat and met with Ms. Rains, and I got an education all on charter schools, and I thought that I had known some, and I learned more that day. So, you know, I, I think that the Cascade people have a valid concern about traffic, but I think that it's been addressed in the site plan. I think the staggered busing things and everything. I think she's gone beyond, you know, having a police officer. If more traffic is needed, she's willing to hire on another police officer to conduct the traffic. They're willing to put up the sidewalks, and the school pays for that. I too was impressed in getting a history of the students that went there, and finding out that they met last week, they were the only school that met with the Attorney General Pam Bondi. The kids from there went and met with her. I don't know any other school in St. Lucy County that had that opportunity or invitation. They, they have a book. They have a published book from that school. I don't know any other schools that have that. And I think most importantly for me, what I, what I took away from it was, you know, I, I had a son that if this option was there, he would have went there. Instead, I had to pull him out and homeschool him. And my grandchildren coming into the school system, my nursing friends, my police friends, that their children go there. I know what kind of parents they are, and I know if their children go there, this has to be an A-rated and one of the top schools in this county, or they would not be going there. So I just wanted to speak this evening to let you know that I've done my homework, and I'm sure you've done yours, and I, I really would like to see this continue, because this is the future I'd like to see for my, my grandchildren. So thank you.
Jonathan Sinski?
Pass.
Pass. Amanda James? Amanda James? Pa- oh, she left? Kelly Schaefer?
Diamond R.?
Diamond R. Oh, he must be the comedian.
My name is Diamond Ratupanat. I am a sophomore at College Preparatory Academy. Somerset College Prep is more than a normal high school. College Preparatory Academy is an atmosphere filled with young, inspiring students full of potential, and they really do care about the school, as demonstrated here tonight. Our school carries the weight and pride of the scholars excited to enter college early and those who are already there. To move our school to a destination where there is no college near will only be, will only hurt our education as future, soon-to-be contributing members of society.
Faith? Twomley?
Hello, I am Faith Twomley. I am a 10th grader at college prep. I had a speech laid out, but I had seen how others are coming at this. I knew one of the concerns was vandalism and littering of campus and around, but our school already keeps our campus clean, and if we don't, Ms. Rains has a very good system of how to keep that clean. And, but, we have, that's, that land was there, and a sign was put up for sale. Am I correct?
Yes.
So, the Cascade people should know that there was something going to be put, built there. So, why not a school? Why not our school? Because it could have been worse. There could have been worse traffic things, exactly like supermarkets, because they're open more often, and they're going to have more traffic. Our school's only open for a few hours. We're in, and then we're out, and then it starts the next day. Please give our school a chance to have this building and give us the education we need. Thank you very much.
Jamie? Jane Twomley? Jane?
My name is Janie Twomley, and I live on Stericker Street here in Port St. Lucie. And I just want to reiterate, I know that you've heard a lot this evening about the parking and the traffic situation, but we do have 88% bus ridership because our school draws from the whole county, not just from one zone, like a lot of the other schools do. And I just don't think that the parking is going to be a problem, because the study's been done by our engineer and by the zoning, you know, planning, planning and zoning board, so I think that, that enough has been said about the traffic situation. And I understand the concerns, you know, from the people who live in Cascade, you know, I know they have concerns about the traffic, but I think that we have, has been stated before, that we have gone over and, and, you know, beyond what's required of us to handle the traffic situation. This, we need this building. We're, we're not asking for rezoning, it was zoned for this purpose originally, and we really need the building because we have students there who have started with the school, they would like to finish with the school. But if we intend to grow, we've got to have a new building, and we need a building that has access, easy access to the college there. We're an A-rated school, we've got excellent teachers and staff. Our teachers show their concern for, for the students every day. The school offers free tutoring, and that was one of the reasons why I chose this school, because of the free tutoring available in ca- you know, in case your child needs help, if they're going to a pub, you know, to a regular public school, you have to hire a tutor, which I've had to do in past years for my daughter. But she is excelling at College Preparatory Academy, and this school has so much to offer for these students. The students that go there created a bond, and they, they encourage the new students, they welcome them to the school, and, you know, they befriend them, they answer their questions if they need to be answered. And so I would ask, like to ask you, please, don't stand in the way of the progress for these, you know, these future stu- you know, students that can, you know, they need a place to grow. And this is an opportunity for students throughout St. Lucie County, not, not just in one zone. And because we are an A-rated school, I think this is a wonderful educational opportunity. Thank you.
Tyler Birch? Tyler?
Hello, my name is Tyler Birch, and I'm a junior at Somerset College Prep. Thanks for coming out, it means a lot. And I was just coming, I just came to say that I used to go to Treasure Coast High School, I went there for two years, freshman and sophomore year. And there's something about this school that's just, there's just a different attitude, like, everyone's fighting for success, you know, and, let's see here, what did I write? There are more learning resources at Somerset as opposed to Treasure Coast. I don't want to slam Treasure Coast or anything, but, okay, no. And here, Ms. Rains, if any, if you're gonna give any principal, anybody in this county or even state maybe, Ms. Rains is, she's the perfect person to give this responsibility to. And, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Rolando Lanz?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Rolando Lanz, I'm the architect, part of Ms. Rains' team, as she's mentioned earlier. We're happy to be here and are ready to answer any questions you may have regarding this particular item that's before you today. We look forward to the opportunity to come back and present for, with, before you the more detailed presentation on the actual site plan. But today, we're here to answer any questions you may have, and if the prior presentations were any indication, it's just affirmation as to why this project is so important to us to be involved in designing this great school, and also on a fantastic piece of land, which we are taking great care to preserve, a significant portion of the Florida, the preserve that is there as an example of the Florida landscape. So we look forward to the opportunity to present that before you in greater detail. We do take very seriously the concerns of the community regarding traffic. We have worked very diligently with our traffic engineer, the city staff, and the third-party traffic engineer that has looked at this project. So we have taken it very seriously. We will continue to work with the community and with staff as this project moves forward. We're very proud of the, of the traffic operation plan that we've developed. And again, I want to just simply say that I'm proud to be part of this project, and if it's, if there's any sense of why I say that, it's the prior 10 or 15 minutes of presentations, I think you would agree with that. So, thank you very much, and I'm at your service if you have any questions regarding the project. Thank you.
Kelly Gregory? Kelly Greg-
Hello, my name is Cody Gregory, and I'm a student at Somerset College Preparatory Academy. And I do understand some of the Cascades residents and other surrounding communities, and their concerns about the traffic, such as with Renaissance. My sister goes there, and it is a horrible mess, the, the traffic around there, but most of my school, as previously stated by other people, we're mostly bus, bus riders, 88% of us, compared to Renaissance, which is only 28%. So, it won't be much of a problem, and there are plans and backup plans in case such an issue happens. So, I'm also a dual enrollment student, and having our campus on-site at IRSC, you know, literally a stone's throw away, makes it very easy for me to walk back and forth from class to class. I walk to my class right after lunch every day. And having, we'd have, if we had to move, you know, even pretty much anywhere that's not in the vicinity of IRSC, it would severely inhibit my ability to do that, because we don't have another car for me to drive, so I cannot really do that, it would limit me to after-class. Also, I have, I have earned the right to dual enrollment through hard work and good grades, so it's just very important to me that I be able to keep this ability, you know, to keep doing dual enrollment classes, because I would like to get an associate before I graduate high school. I mean, I left LPA to come to this school. At LPA, it's, it just, it seemed like I was just a number there, it didn't matter. My teachers, you know, give me the thousand yards there if I had to, if I wanted to talk to them about something, you know? Their job is just to push me through. I go to this school, I came to this school. The classes are smaller, there's more opportunities for one-on-one time with the teachers. It provides an overall, just a better learning environment for me, a more productive one. Teachers that, teachers and staff, you know, everybody that actually cares about my education, what I want to do with my life. So, that is all.
Is Rena here? Did you want to speak by the time he gets?
Hello, good evening. My name is Renee Gregory. I'm also a resident of Port St. Lucie, homeowner, taxpayer, and I feel that it is also my son's right also to be in this school. We pulled him, as he stated, we pulled him out of LPA because he was just a number. All they cared is that he was gifted and that he had great test scores. But when it came right down to it, they didn't care. At this school, he has excelled even farther than we thought he could. I mean, he has hopes and dreams, and if this school doesn't happen, if this doesn't go on as planned, where's his sister, who's in second grade, who goes to Renaissance? So we, we do, we totally understand the craziness that they, they're worried about with the traffic. But that's a big difference, 88% bus rider versus 28%. Plus, the lanes, big difference. The lanes are so much shorter at Renaissance, and the numbers that they're letting out at one time are so much higher, because they let everyone out at the same time. They let kindergarten through eighth grade, they don't stagger anything. This school has proposed a plan that if given the opportunity, it will succeed. Thank you very much.
Is Kelly here? Is Kelly?
My name's Kelly Gregory, just had the last two of my family. Just want you to know, this school's important to all these kids. I'm not gonna do any talking points, you guys heard enough tonight. My son did go to LPA. And when you talk to a teacher and they give you a thousand yard stare when they're supposed to be listening to you, I don't want to take my kid to that school anymore. Principal Rains has done her best to give the best to these kids. They deserve no less. They're taking a chance, and it's paying off. The one-on-one they get, the time my son takes to tutor other students, to help them bring their grades up, not that they're bad, but he's becoming a teacher in his own right, even as a junior. This helps these kids. It's important this school happens, especially for these kids. You only have two A schools in this county, two. As far as I'm concerned, Treasure Coast Prep is the only one you got. That's all I got to say.
Michelle? Last one, Michelle Schmore?
Thank you for allowing us to speak and hearing the voices of all of these wonderful kids and their families. My name is Michelle Schnorr. I have four children in the district. We've been here 11 years. My children range all the way from college, high school, here at this wonderful high school. We have a middle schooler, and I have an elementary school, so I've got the full range. I want you to know that what you've heard here tonight is not unique to this school. Usually, the kids who have the courage to come and speak in front of you will be your upper part of that, the, the, the student body. Every single one of those kids, every single one of the kids at this school is like the kids that you've heard and the parents that you've heard. We're all very dedicated to the school. I have a unique perspective. My kids have been through a lot of different schools in the district. I'm a very hard person, and my husband were very difficult to please. I have a master's degree in education. You cannot teach a curriculum developer's kid. And I am here to tell you that Principal Rains is by far, and I've also worked for the district for three years, by far the best principal I've ever seen. I trust her with my children, my child now, and the ones that I have coming up. I would like to see this school offer them, including, I've heard some issues about ESE or questions about ESE. I have no doubt this principal and this staff will make a wonderful place for my kids. I have, I want to share one thing with you that just kind of struck me. We're, we're from Morningside Academy. We've been there. And I will tell you that a lot of folks from Morningside, from the private schools, just can't really pay the tuition anymore, and they're looking for this school. When my kids were coming up, I was thinking, what am I gonna do? I'm gonna have to move. My husband drives all the way to Pompano every day. He has for 10 years, so that we can stay here where our family and our church and our school is. You will keep families like ours and, and a lot of the families who want that alternative, you will keep them here by providing them a school, a high school option, like this school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was the last card that I did have for speaking. I do want to say something. Erica, I saw you, I've seen you go through bad times and good times. What the unique part of this school is, the bonding and the family that's with this school, and I've watched you grow, and I watched the kids grow, because I was part of it at the beginning, from ground up. I'm, I'm proud to say that we've come a long way, the school has come a long way, and I'll tell you that I'm still gonna support you, and I'm gonna support, support this tonight. What is the direction of council?
Motion to approve ordinance 14-66.
I'll second it, but under discussion. I'd like to hear a little bit about your meeting with the residents, because I do think there's some issues that have to be addressed or at least described how they were addressed. So, Councilwoman Berger, I'd like to hear from you.
Well, thank you. Madam Mayor, is that okay? Thank you, Councilwoman. I provided, or actually, our staff provided for your reading pleasure backup from the meeting itself. And what you'll see was, there's actually a transcript of the types of questions that were asked. We were there for probably about two and a half hours, you know, just over two hours. So really good discussion. I will tell you, as you read the backup, as you can see, the majority of that particular community was against the traffic issue. community was against the traffic issue, but not necessarily against the project. And they were pretty clear about that. So, there's a lot of former educators, very reasonable people that live in the Cascades. And so, I think that, I heard a couple times, as people were coming up, they were using that development's name, you know, by name, they were saying the Cascades. And what I want to do is make sure that we don't project out that that's such a negative community and that they're against the school, because that's not really been the case. The case is, they're just concerned about real issues, as we all should be. So, you know, kind of start there. So, the packet's here. It's available for public record, if anybody wants to see it. And as you can see, you received some additional emails along the way from some individuals and some individuals that were here tonight. So, again, starting off with saying, well, first of all, the speakers tonight, especially the young speakers, were amazing. And I, at that age, could never walk up to a microphone and speak in front of a group of five, much less this. I just never could do that. So, I just can't wait to see what, I should get their autographs now, because they're going to be something special, that's for sure. I'm going to go through a couple, I guess, a series of what the worries were, and then, you know, where I kind of fit into that as well. But the project itself, everybody loves the idea of this quality project. I mean, it's an A school, and it's a school that represents high quality, and it's an opportunity for us to be very proud of, you know, something new that happens within the community. So, again, it's, the concerns that were coming were not just from that community, but they are from the surrounding area. So, people that live all around that area and businesses that have to frequent those particular roadways. That being Kashmir, that being California, that being Peacock, and even the northern roads that come from 95 through the Torino community. Worries. It's on a roundabout. And Ms. Rains, I think you know, I shared some of these concerns with the representative along the way from there. But being on a roundabout, roundabouts, depending on which engineer you speak to, are very safe when driven correctly and when designed correctly around there. And I understand that there's going to be a 15 mile an hour zone all around there for when the school's there, but it's still a very intense project on a roundabout. Okay, another worry. The overflow parking is at Indian River State College. That is not typically how we do overflow parking on especially big venues. It's usually adjacent, you know, so it's usually somewhere where it's still close. And between the adjacent, or, excuse me, between that parking opportunity and the actual land for the school, there's still a lot of land out there that I believe belongs to the college. And so, we do have to consider the fact that that's going to be built at some point in time. So, saying now that that's what we're going to use for it to be the parking, the overflow parking, it may work for the next year, two years, but we can't guarantee the long-term availability of that as a overflow parking. And as the college grows, and as the city grows, and obviously, the school will grow as well, so grows the concerns. Additional worries. I would like, if we can, to have staff just check out the line of sight issues that I heard over and over again from the Cascades development. So, this may not be our issue as a city. It may be, you know, on the private property of the Cascades. But as a good partner, I would like to see us go in there and see how we could help facilitate making those lines of sight a little clearer. The point may not be that they can't see for the next, say, 20 feet to a half-mile, but that the roadway itself generates a lot of speedway action, right? Because it's kind of a straightaway. And, you know, admittedly, I enjoy that straightaway myself, because there's no stop signs. And so, when somebody gets on there and wants to speed, it becomes quite a hazard. So, if we could take a look at that, that would be helpful. The stormwater runoff, we had St. Lucie West Service District representatives there and former representatives there. Some walked to the lectern and did voice concerns about the watershed and the path of the water. And understanding that not every bit of this project is going to be built out, there's going to be areas where water can sit and do the natural thing. It does still have to move in one direction, and that typically, as you know, in St. Lucie West, is kind of like dotted points, and it goes through that particular development and then others. And the biggest difference to remember with water runoff in St. Lucie West is, it's different than the rest of the city, because there's about a 12, I believe it's about a 12-inch variance from the most northern, trying to remember this with, trying to get my public workers' eyeballs, the northwestern portion down to the southeastern portion of St. Lucie West, it's about a 12-inch variance, if I remember, which is why we have the enclave flooding when we have big issues, because it all just runs downhill. Which, we'll get a chance to talk about that later with Mr. Cutler with another project on this agenda, which is good news. 88 percent of the traffic that's coming in, or 88 percent of the students are transported by buses, is what we're hearing. So, that is, I guess it falls under a category of both a worry and a positive, because right now, it may be seen as a positive. But again, it's a dynamic number. This is something that will change every year based on who's attending the school. I like the staggered times. The issues with the other schools that are by there are issues with the other schools. And we have had some really good conversations, our police department, our engineering department, our city manager's office, with, just to give an example, the school that's out in the tradition area. We have traffic issues at every school, but in this particular school, we have a lot of traffic issues currently that has been working with the city to try to resolve. Not all principals are as open to resolutions. I would like to see the principals of those other adjacent schools to this location be more responsive and meet with us and try to create some opportunities, because we control the roads, but we don't control the schools. And it would be the same thing here. So, I appreciate the plan that's in place, but we did have plans in place for these other schools, that the plans have changed along the way and morphed, and we lose control of that when we don't have the relationship with the principal. So, that being said, what I will say is that, knowing Ms. Rains so long, I do know that you have a fantastic reputation within the community and that you work with the city very well, contract after contract. There's been no issues. But much like the busing, there's no guarantee that you're going to be here for the rest of your life either. And so, any principal could come in and make the decision to change those regulations as well, or those best practices within your school. So, that's my concern as well. Although we addressed the issue of the turning lanes by the church, and we talked about the fact that it is in the design phase now, I don't want to ignore the fact that it wasn't until, I think not even two years ago, that we were going to, that we said, okay, we'll improve California right there. So, that took an effort of just continuous conversation up here. And what we know is that the intersection there at University, where the school currently is, at University and California is a level, I would guess it's a Level D at peak times. And that's because the school's letting out, the college is letting out, people might be going to the church, or they might just be going as a pass-through. But the road currently is not in a position to accommodate the traffic that's there now. And so, we're trying to get up to speed and get to there. So, when I expressed some of these concerns with the representative, he had fantastic responses for me. And I would say that the one response that I agree with, I agree with many, but one of the responses I agree with is that the current project, on paper, with the traffic information, shows less traffic trips than the previously approved projects and in the original DRI, the opportunities for trips at that location. The concern and worry is that although it's less trips, it's a more concentrated time. So, we have less cars, but they're all going to be there at the same time. And that's where we start talking about level of service and how do we make sure it doesn't impact a road so much. Ideally, if I had, if I could wave a magic wand and make, you know, do the biggest fix, it would be to ask the school to change it from being a roundabout to a more conventional stop. And it being of either a traffic light or something that would give us an opportunity to control traffic a little bit more. That concerns me. And the overflow parking, again, because we're making determinations now based on unknowns for the future. So, that being said, I think I hit just about every one of the main concerns, kind of I have all my people out there. Does that sound about right? I hit everything? And the biggest discussion that went back and forth was, everybody recognizes that when we make decisions up here, it's not really for, it's not only for the people that are here today, and it's not really only for the kids that are going to go in there or our population today. But as a city, we are going to be built out at over 400,000 people. And so, when you consider that, and, you know, then all of a sudden, what seems like where we have enough schools out there, perhaps we don't. But again, the school district is completely separate from us. The approvals for those schools are completely separate from us, and all we control are the roads. So, while we control the roads, then, for these reasons and these worries, I'm pretty sure you're going to pass tonight on first reading, but I won't support it, because I'm hoping that I can get maybe some more concentration on some of those areas of concern between now and next reading. And if you have three or more votes, maybe you don't have to be concerned. But just for the betterment of the community in large and understanding that we're not looking to make it right just for today, but if you're going to be there long-term, and I think that's your commitment, is that you want to be there for a while, then we've got to figure out a way to accommodate for a city of 400,000 in an area that has a concentration or the highest concentration of schools within the entire district. St. Lucie West has the highest concentration of schools. So, we just got to figure out a balance, because if it's not, it's a great project on paper. But when you think about the project on paper, between the hours of, I don't know, 2:00 and 4:00, and between the hours of, say, what, 7:00 and 9:00, then it's not compatible, in my opinion. So, we've got to figure out a way to kind of work that. So, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think I've covered every bit of the concerns that we heard.
Any other discussions?
I just wanted to point out that there were conditions that were included in planning and zoning's recommendations, and that they should be included. And also, that I think it's important to what Councilwoman Berger was speaking about as far as the traffic studies being done. And I don't know the answer, because I'm not a traffic engineer with regard to traffic lights versus roundabouts and what's more effective. But perhaps as we move through this phase, I would like to see those items be addressed. As I know, this will, even after second reading, this will come back through site plan review again.
Right.
So, there are many phases before we get to the end, so.
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman, I would like to see those contingencies kind of be expanded, and specifically, like around the staggered times before second reading. If we could have specifics on what that looks like. And the reason for that is, I think that is going to be the best bet to regulate the flow of traffic and to keep the flow moving. And without having it written into the approval, we can't enforce it.
Any other issues, concerns?
I just, I just think that, Mr. Bowen, maybe you should amend your motion so that includes the conditions, and then...
I'm just going to make the motion, and I was going to state, so, to approve ordinance with no conditions. And if you want to address it with the second reading, fine. My motion is to approve ordinance 14-66, and I think that's, these people came here this evening to have it passed and can be fine-tuned down the road.
Okay. Well, for me, I just, planning and zoning made conditions, and I think that they're appropriate to follow. So, I want to make sure that those conditions are included. Otherwise, I can't support your original motion. So, they're already in, they're already been in, it's been recommended.
Yeah, so I just...
They're already in the ordinance.
Madam Mayor, so, you're correct, the conditions are in there as the suggestion for approval, but with anything we can approve, we can approve with conditions, which is what Councilwoman Martin is asking for, to just accept the conditions that were being written in. I don't think the applicant has any problem with those conditions. They've already said that they'd be okay with it. So, it would behoove us to create the conditions so that we can enforce something should things or people change along the way. And then, from my point of view, all I'm asking for is that before second reading, that the actual staggered times be actually placed in with the area, the verbiage that says staggered times. So that if in six years from now, Ms. Rains is now at the George Washington University as the dean or something, we can make sure we go to the next principal and make sure these are enforced. If we don't put it in here, then it will be like the other mistakes that we've had around, what we see in the county, throughout the county. You know, sometimes schools get shoehorned in. And so, here we are, needing to make sure that we don't have those regulations. So, I appreciate you asking for that to be amended.
If they're in there, fine, we'll make the amendment then, just to get moving.
And I will second it with the conditions as stated by the planning and zoning board and Councilwoman Berger's comments with regard to more work with regard to the staggered times.
Okay. I have a first and second. Any further discussions? See, none. Ms. Phillips, please call for a vote.
The motion is for approval of ordinance 14-66 with the conditions as stated by the planning and zoning board and the staggered terms verbiage. Mayor Fiala?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Bowen?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Berger?
No, ma'am.
11 resolutions, 11 A, resolution 14-R138. Ms. Phillips, please read the resolution.
I think we can say congratulations and let them go. Take a break.
Did you?
Got a lot of people to exit.
I'm sure that they want to leave, council saying, so we'll just wait until exit, and we continue with our resolution.
So, congratulations.
Congratulations.
[applause]
Yeah.[1766.83]